I'll open up this meeting of the main planning board. Today's date is Tuesday, July twenty second, two thousand twenty five and the time is seven oh two P M. And here in town hall, we have five members of the planning board and we have one member joining us online. Chris Klein, can you just confirm that you can participate online?
I can participate online.
Thanks, Chris. This meeting can, there's no one here, so we don't need to go through the typical process, but please note this meeting is being recorded. Bill. Alright, let's, let's turn to item one, meeting minutes.
There was actually, there was a change on this one. We didn't run it last time. Chris had changed. I don't know what it was.
Is this the change version?
Yeah. Oh, it was about the. Oh, no, that was on the decision. Never mind. Forget, forget that stuff. No, I'm only.
Yeah, I don't think we've seen this before.
No, we didn't. I was thinking a decision.
I got one change, Bill.
Okay.
On the, you can, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Second page.
Yeah.
Fourth paragraph.
Oh, yeah.
Last sentence.
Yeah.
It says that I mentioned that they could donate fund towards improvements of downtown. If you could just have that say the downtown enhancement fund or whatever it was.
Donate funds towards downtown enhancement fund?
Yeah, whatever the official.
To the downtown enhancement fund?
Yeah. And then change it to Bill chainsaw two in the beginning of paragraph.
Actually, since I wasn't at this meeting, is that paragraph accurate that they're going to maintain the site? What does the sidewalk by the bridge mean?
No, that was the request.
Oh.
What they're really gonna do is in the decision, in the bold.
Yes. In front there. Okay.
It's the whole property.
Right.
In the decision. Didn't get the bridge and get the bridge. Bill, do we usually list the conditions in the meeting minutes?
Yeah. Anybody listen in the minutes?
Yeah, we listen in these minutes. Is that, do we typically do that?
Maybe a part, I think that was part of the motion.
Yeah, I'm just curious if we.
If it's part of the motion.
Okay.
I mean, if, I guess sometimes we kind of talk about the essence of it and I formulate an after.
Yeah, I just, I don't like to have multiple records that could contradict each other.
Right.
Because there's the decision, the decision's the decision.
Right.
Right? And that's where the actual conditions are. I, I don't know how important that is though, too, if they consider that.
Well, would you like to change these to word them just the way that's a.
I don't know. I'm asking.
I think it's okay.
You think it's fine? Okay.
Yeah, I wouldn't worry about. No, I wouldn't worry about that at all. Because, you know, with a. Some work decision, the board's making some subchanges anyway. The hours of operations. I, I see this. It says M to S. Was it, it was Monday. Sunday, right? We said that, that was what we said. It was Sunday.
Yeah, that should probably be clarified. It was seven days a week.
Yeah, I'll change that. Let's spell it out.
Anyone else?
One there.
Hold on, make a motion.
Motion to approve that. Minutes of June ten and eleven.
I'll say it. All in favor to approve the meeting minutes as many as is reasonable?
There we go.
Oh. Sorry, yeah. That, that's, that's fine, Chris. So please raise your hand if you vote for the meeting minutes.
I moved standing.
You're standing?
I wasn't there.
I don't know. Okay, Mark, you wanna vote?
I wasn't there.
Oh, you don't wanna vote either? Okay, Chris, do you vote yes?
I vote yes.
Okay, so that's four, four to zero to approve meeting minutes.
Four to zero?
Thanks, guys, for making that really complicated. Alright, let's, um, let's open up the continuance of the public hearing for the powder mill overlay districts of districts D E F. This is a continuation from uh, June twenty fourth, two thousand twenty five. Uh, Bill, you wanna, so for folks that may watch this recording, do you wanna just give us status of this for everyone?
Well, we, uh, I've been working offline, Natalie and Bill. And myself and Zoe, and there's been some uh, changes that, um, I'll ask Bill to, I like solid one of that, but uh, most of it was words that they table elimination. Uh, we did uh, make some changes that the, the, the board wanted on the last meeting, which at the moment they're stating we. Uh, and we also had the, um, one question on, well, two questions. First question is, um, if we really need to advertise, re-advertise this, and right now, I don't think we do as it is. I don't know if there's anything that gives the board any, you know, angina, uh, and we wanna continue it. I mean, we wanna, um, you know, continue it another couple of weeks. Anyway, we have time. But right now, I don't think we need to re-advertise. My only question was, uh, that I brought up, uh, is right regarding the map, which we can't really. The two little spots.
Can we, can we talk about it?
No. I mean, the we should, but I, I don't, it's all connected.
It is all connected.
Yeah, I mean, what's, anybody that's interested in the planning board hearing of the B M O A.
Again, next time.
It's gonna expect, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think I would vote, though. I think we'll continue that one to vote.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. I mean, we can, we can get an update on it.
Yeah.
We just, you know.
Well, I have nothing. I, I, um, so Bill, do you find, uh, going over some of the changes that we made, I, I.
Sure.
Try it there.
Yeah, so there's some minor three minor changes made to the draft that was presented, the, the last meeting, um, in response to some questions that arose and some other concern and it's very, the next review. Um, none of them, however, seem to be more constructive. A lot of them are just to clarify or even be less constructive. So for example, on nine seven point five, the site plan table. That language is pretty broad, um. You know, anything that is cleared by right, or it's, you know, the site plan deal with that. This updated language, you know, specifically exempt single family and duplex dwellings from that requirement, because we do that elsewhere as well, um. Because there's a little overlap with a couple of those in some of the the, in the E zone, um. And also, though, once we ever get around to the final phase of this and deal with the residential property, you can see the old. Minor change there. Next one was something we talked about a lot. If you go to section, propose section nine seven seven, the dimensional requirements. Couple things happened here. The cable that was presented in last meeting was updated to be more consistent with the table that's in the primary zoning documents. In the mains D B L, um, so it includes lines that say minimum percent of lot area of open space in the front yard and stuff. Um, but even though that text is new, the dimensions are still the same as what they are um, for the existing underlying. So there's no it, it's not worsening the impact on that. The one thing that did change is we talked about, um, open space adjacent to the Assavet River in a setback from the, uh, property foliage along Powder Mill. And I checked the dimensions we've been using uh, at seventy six Powder Mill, and it's closest to about a hundred and seventy five foot setback instead of a hundred and fifty foot that was uh, discussed last time. So that basically brings the line basically from the back of the old Victor Plaza building, back of the block. Um, so that was a question that came up. So that, that is an adjustment from last thing. Um, there's also a couple clarifications in the, um, footnotes, you know. The open space, you know. If you have pathways or something for public access, that can be included in this open space. So that was the clarification. Moving on. Let's see. We'll get over to nine seven nine. Um, actually used table, table permitted and prohibited uses. And the the listing of the residential uses was changed for more clarification. So we, we, instead of having a generic multi-family listed as like we had last time, we, you know, M O D A has a specific multi-family seventeen acre thing that was required by state law. So we wanted to get that in there and for clarification purposes, you know, provide, uh, yes, no's for all the other, um, sub-districts. And while we're at it, since we were proposing small mixed use along the river, um, we added that to the A and the C districts as well. So there's some minor changes in that table. But just to that, the listing of the residential uses. One of our key added uses, Phil. Uh, then the last thing simply is over in nine point seven one, oh, nine point seven ten and nine point seven eleven. There was some text that was basically moved from ten to eleven. Both really applied to large parcels. That's, the text was, um, uh, talking about where it put parking lots and stuff and trying to have the building not turn its back to the river. But that's really a, uh, design standard that applies on the large project. So it was just moved over there, those rooms, and um, so that's basically, one other thing that was done was a check of all the new uses that we've been doing, um. You know, like the construction office or the firearm users and stuff, to see if there're gonna be any conflicts with this and anything needs to be added. But, um, those are addressed under the underlying base zoning and they're consistent with, you know, will be objective. So um, and so that's it for the change. And I still have a couple implementation questions. But, um, if you wanna talk about any other changes, any questions on that?
I don't know, questions?
Okay.
Now, Chris Klein, do you have any questions on the proposed changes that we just discussed?
I do not.
That'd be good.
Yeah, okay. So I had a couple technical questions that, I mean, maybe it's the roaming, but not everybody, but like under nine seven eleven cited building design standards for large projects, we'd say that applies to new development using the P M O D. That consists of more than fifty thousand square feet of land or more than ten thousand gross feet, every feet of building. So I think the intent is that it would be like new construction or expansion of a building or something like that.
Did you see my note I sent back to about that?
Did, but you know, the question the board is, are we comfortable with our understanding of what new development would be? I mean, would it be a change of use? You know, we take the Victory Plaza, turn the whole thing into a I don't know, bowling alley, you know? Twenty thousand square foot bowling alley. Um, is that a new development or is that same building? Okay, this doesn't happen, if those, these rules don't apply? I mean, what are we thinking?
I, I.
I don't know what new development is in the zoning interpretation.
Well, I, I, we don't have it per se. When I, when I looked at, when I looked it up, I was thinking about, okay, if you have a recon, the closest thing I can think of that made sense would be if you have a reconstruction of a non-conforming structure. Okay? What is the percentage that you're allowed to keep the non-conformant? So in other words, this building is, doesn't conform with anything we have right now in our zone, right? If there's a fire. Okay. When does it lose the right to be reconstructed as it works? And ours is, I, was it twenty, twenty-five percent? I said, whatever. I think it was twenty.
We have rules on that.
Yeah, it's twenty, uh, so using that, which is the only thing I could think of, I said, well, if you're changing it by twenty, you know, over twenty-five percent, uh, then it would I would think would be subject to design standards, and that would be new construction. So we could adopt whatever we want. But one thing we have, one other thing we have found that I didn't talk about yet, we have other affected parts of the zoning bylaw that we're gonna eventually make changes to accommodate this zone. Like, for example, what was when we had, um, oh, in the beginning, in, in section two point two, when it talks about overlay districts. Okay? It doesn't mention P M O D. We're gonna wanna put that in there. So that's gonna be an amendment to that. So what we're doing is we're keeping, we're, we just started a separate table of changes that are not gonna necessarily be part of this.
But we're.
Adjacent.
Yeah.
Right. And so the idea is when we get them, we'll do those at the last minute. And, because we'll just load them all up at once. So if we wanted to do something like a new development uh, definition, or what constitutes that, we could put it in there to, so interesting definitions, perhaps, to say like new development, whatever we thought. My thought for use assuming a use is permitted one to another, okay? Like if something was downtown, and let's just say it was permitted as a use use, uh, of, uh, a widget factory or whatever. And it was going to change to another use that is permitted. Would we be involved at all? And the answer is, if it was a special permit requirement, we would. But if it wasn't, we wouldn't be involved at all. Restaurant to retail, for example. It'd be unusual. They would come to us. If, if all of a sudden, um, Roast the Peppers became a dog rumor, it, it wouldn't come to us at all. But if it was a cocktail lounge, they were gonna become, you know, then they would come to us. What we do in that case? And we, we do what the special permit allows and what we require. So there's some questions to think through there, but, uh, so far as new instruction, or what, what constitutes new development, that's the best I can think of right now, you know? But we, we have time to do that, but Bill's right, we should.
What was our, does anyone recall where that came from and what the intent was? Was that language from non-conformity, from our, well, the term new development, was that language we pulled from?
No, I had a plan we just threw in here when we had the design standards to try to set a trigger point when large would apply versus small. But now I agree about, so I'm thinking, actually, it might it might work if we just clarified and say the following standard shall apply to development usually in the powder mill overlay districts. So anything that chooses to use the P M O D that consists of more than fifty thousand square feet of land area, including open space, or more than ten thousand gross square feet of new or expanded built.
Yeah, that's the, where did you put that?
Right here.
Oh, so I just, I should, I gotta copy that.
Yeah.
Oh, here.
So I think it's just, it's the same one. So it's the, it's
Yeah.
The development that, anything that uses the P M O D. That's, you know, more than fifty thousand square feet of land area. Not put it open. Um, and or if it's ten thousand gross square feet of new or expanded building.
That works.
That's, now it does leave out renovating within the walls.
Renovating Victory Plaza as one whole.
Yeah.
If they, if they keep the same exact footprint.
When would we get all of that if they decided to do that?
Yeah, but if they renovated just the first floor, would that even be part of the overlay district?
Well, if they.
Only if they wanted a brewery with food.
Sure.
Yes, under very limited circumstances, that would not apply.
But if someone's renovating that property, it's gonna be multi-story, which would trigger the overlay district, which, which would, the, the language Bill just proposed would work in that case.
Right.
I mean, theoretically, you know, you could convert the self-storage building into a one-level hotel. Yeah, and I guess it wouldn't apply. But although that property is probably more than fifty thousand square feet, so that's what applied.
Right.
So maybe if we just do it that way, that's fine. This clarifies it and.
That, that captures a large land project and either a large reno or a large addition or a large new build with the ten thousand gross square foot. Which I think is kind of the, I think that.
Yeah, well, that was, that was the original intent, as a trigger point. Right. No, we don't want this to happen for little stuff.
Right.
But at some point, maybe that happened in this.
So this, that change would go okay, we say, okay, yeah, I wanna make sure I have that, let's get that.
But that's already written.
Oh, yeah?
You were extended.
Yeah, but it would, you gotta get rid of
Okay.
And then you have to get rid of just cross up those things.
Yeah.
And I still use when you're done.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think that one would be five. Well, my other question on this goes back to second page of nine seven five, the site plan approval.
Yeah.
I'm a little concerned that that may apply more often than we desire.
Well, we can amend it to, and the other section too, you know, if we wanna in other words, like, like, if there was something we thought that, here, let, let me refresh every site plan approval as opposed to special permit approval or a variance. Site plan approval is not governed by state statute. We made it work, we, we made it a public hearing. It doesn't even have to be a public hearing. We put it in our zoning bylaws, it does. But if we decided we didn't want it, we wouldn't have to have it. We can have any standards we want there. So that.
But if I build an eight-foot fence.
Yeah.
In the P M O D.
Right.
For my new P M O D, you said yes.
Yeah. Would you use a site plan?
Would I use a site plan?
Because it's a structure.
Yeah, that structure doesn't necessarily trigger. We, we have.
The way this is written, it does.
Okay. We, we, well, first, we, we say section ten point five shall apply, right?
To all, to use a building for your permitted.
Right, right. So let's look at, let's look at what that says. Ten point five. It, it breaks it down by district in some cases, so we can change it. So I'll show you.
Just concerned about unintended consequences.
People kind of need to expert.
The, the goal is to mimic, to mimic ten point five, right?
I would think.
Um, yeah, I guess it pretty much is.
So why, why can't we just say?
Well, you might wanna.
Ten point five shall apply.
Here we go. This is gonna blow your minds. This is old language that came from the original consultant.
The new P C or?
Yeah.
So we gotta show us to Chris, sir. Look at me go, look at me go.
Twenty twenty-five.
We are. I'm on fire.
Do you think I can start keeping a pair of glasses at town hall?
Why are you looking at me?
Right on the desk.
Yeah.
Can, can you not, can you not see who you're looking at? I, I don't, you don't need my information.
I'm just looking at general.
What do we say, ten five, right?
Yes.
There's five drawers in that desk. I think you can find.
Okay. Here you go.
Keep it okay. Planning board box.
Can you see this, guys?
Little, little more, Bill.
I'll move this out.
I'm good.
What, this little thing off the side?
I think you hit the three lines on the left.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I knew that.
Let's zoom in. There you go.
Okay. So, okay. In this case, now remember, this is not, this is us. This is not, this is not state. We put, uh, site panel we require is central business district. And we give, we give specific things to keep it from being, like Bill said, to burdensome, so we could you're bad.
Look away, look far.
Go up. Swearing, gotta edit that out. Okay. Except for signs or expansion of, okay. So we could we could just make our own, that, first of it is put our own
uh, single like two family.
Amendment here in all districts.
So any expansion greater than a thousand square feet.
Right, that's what I wrote you today.
So can we just say?
Can we strike it?
We just say section ten point five shall apply?
Yeah, but the difference for so, oh, yeah, sure.
Right, and then and then say, single family and duplex dwelling units are exempt.
But this already says that.
Okay.
Four is the one that I had to question of Bill today. This is the one, was this, is this gonna throw us?
Oh, five parking spaces?
Yeah.
Good enough for the rest of the town.
So do, but, but is that, well, you're saying about what is, what do we, we don't want to create something more burdensome. Is that more burdensome? That's unreasonable, so? Five spaces or more, you gotta come for site plan?
Well, but that's, that's existent. That's existent. We could, we could, if, if they if they put in five spaces, it would be a ten point five special permit regardless.
Not necessarily.
Well, it would be. In all districts.
It would be a site plan.
It would only be a site plan if it fell in one of the categories.
It says in all districts.
It says in all districts.
All districts except.
We could, we could.
We could set, I'm saying, we could amend it or the P M O D.
No, P M O D could say ten five applies, except.
They could do that too.
Only for ten or more parking spaces.
But, but I'm not sure we need to do that. Do we want to? Has it, that was my question to you for that. Because I, I was thinking, yeah, five more parking spaces can be triggered by.
What does create the need for five or more parking spaces mean?
Well.
If you're doing it and you maintain the same amount of parking, it doesn't apply?
You have a new usage coming in. And like, let's say it was office and they went, let's say it was professional office and they went to retail. Okay, or something that generated more.
Yeah.
You'd have to come in for site plan review. So what do we do? We, like, we did, uh, let's You'd have to come in for site plan review, so what do we do, we like, we did, let's think.
But even if. No matter what the. No matter what the pre-existing parking situation.
Yeah, but I don't think we really want in this here and mess with that.
Okay.
And and indirectly, I think we actually. Make it easier in the overlay because the overlay has. Lower and more consistent parking requirements. So a change, a change of use is not gonna trigger. A need for five unnecessary parking spaces.
Yeah, well, the only reason I brought it up is because you asked that question, I was thinking, well.
I I think we just, yeah.
So where was the fence?
Ten five shall apply and just leave.
That's it.
And we're done.
That's it. And you can say. It, I think it's helpful to say, single-family and duplex dwelling units are exempt.
Yeah, but it wouldn't hurt to repeat it here.
Yeah. That makes it very abundant.
You wanna do it, cause it is a little.
Yeah, another one, a little wonky, a little wonky on the other one. Well, so where is that passage, Phil?
Are you, are you still sharing the right screen? Or did you?
No, I'm not sharing anything, I want to see where where this.
Nine seven five. In the beginning.
Oh, backwards and going.
Chris, can you see what we're doing or are you on the wrong screen?
We're on the wrong screen.
I I'm on, I'm on nine seven five on the document on my screen, don't worry about Bill's navigation, just tell me what section you're looking at.
I was working on the video, so.
Okay, nine seven five.
I'm there.
So it says nine, section ten point five shall apply, and then we just delete the rest of that sentence.
Bill, can you share your screens? I do, I do wanna have this recorded for you. No, don't, don't do that.
Go back to Zoom. Yeah, I'm sure. Now pick. That one.
Okay, so Bill, you're thinking, right, just, are you saying get rid of the single-family?
No, actually, leave that.
The first sentence. Section ten point five shall apply.
Yeah.
End of sentence.
I can't, I can't look at them.
Get rid of the last.
The rest.
Everything else, get rid of.
The rest of the first sentence.
Keep single-family and duplex dwelling units are exempt.
But this, this is existing already, right?
No, that's proposed in our.
Is that already existing under what?
Ah, yes, it is, that is existing, yes, you're right, because that's in PMOD A language.
So we would strike that.
So we would strike. From two uses to PMOD, yes, and you're right, you're straight. Right where your, your.
Okay.
Where it is.
Do you want me to drag?
Yeah. I'm dead. I caught that one.
That's a strike, you're right.
This is what we're keeping, this is our working copy.
That's a strip.
What do I?
Oh, I'm gonna show you something, I can show you that.
Okay, show me.
Let's just blow it over me.
Don't make fun of me.
I'm not, I I thought I did.
Strike through, strike through is only, strike through is only on the. Tool bar, it's not on that.
Oh, you know what you can do, you can, you can go over this and highlight one that's stricken?
No.
Hey, so Natalie could go to the tab done dropped and hit homes.
Delete this.
There you go.
There we go.
And then the strike is right there.
There.
Yeah.
Cool. Yeah, that's. All right, it's good.
The old school is gonna be the.
Shall apply.
Of Chinese school.
Yeah, yeah.
So when you take, do the teacher now, it takes her right up in there and that's.
I haven't done the detail.
Yeah.
But it's.
It's right on the edge of May or.
No, 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 we want to do that.
Oh.
Yeah, it's just, yeah. Is that on then?
It's. That's, yeah, so when you do nine seven eleven.
This is.
Where's Natalie's?
This is all just. Horse. Yeah, it's.
There's yours.
Woods.
Yes.
Building.
It just. Yeah. Abby Barrett and there's a.
Oh.
What?
Abby Barrett, right there, there we go.
Letting you just delete. That's an ad, that whole thing is a new ad.
There, yeah. Uh, I think we wanted to say, the following standard shall apply to the powder mill overlay district. Nothing we need to say that. Develop and utilize.
That's fine, yeah, yeah, I agree with that, that's more clear.
Right? Yeah.
Your words.
The potential play of the power all over the district.
Well, no. No, I'm sorry, because this is actually just a one thousand, so it's development using. Sorry, you gotta delete the last.
Okay. Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe consist rather than consist, but. Yeah. Cool.
It's just within us.
I think so. It it. You have to go to.
Well, if we're going.
To give you life.
You never know.
Yeah. Is data singular or plural in your opinion?
Plural.
Data?
Yeah.
Data R. Data R. That is what I've been referring to a data set.
Same.
There's the the data, the data set is. So I didn't put, oh, yeah, there's, there's controversy with that.
I've numbered like ninety-nine.
Same thing, you're like, there's fifty thousand square feet of land, is that a singular or plural? It's plural, we're referring to each sort of foot of land is.
Yeah.
Those do so well in English.
So, so I think that's. It on the zoning language. But now we're a little, you know, kind of an awkward spot on what to do, if in fact you can't talk about the. District map. That's about it. They can't act on it.
Can't act on it.
Because we won't have enough people to vote next meeting.
That's true too. But we don't, I mean, it's not.
We won't be able to vote until the twenty-sixth or.
When does this need to begin? What's that? When, when does this need to be in to meet, to meet town meeting requirements of?
Uh, for October meeting is.
Probably September.
So we're at the last meeting in August.
Yeah, we're good, that's fine.
I'll be there.
That's what I'll have there. Uh, is this part good here?
Um, any other comments or questions? We do have, somebody came online to, Abby Barrett came on. Okay, hold on, Bill. This is, Chris Klein, do you have any further comments or questions?
I do not.
Okay, anyone's from the board? No, that's it, Bill?
Yeah, if.
Yeah, Bill, yeah, is that it? Yeah. Do we want to just continue this? So you want, you're advising, we could continue so that we're voting at the same time as the map? If there is a city. I don't know, I.
If there's any other changes we want to make?
I mean, something else, we we have time, we were pretty much. Unless you guys wanna. I'm fine with continuing to match it with the map's schedule. Because we can't do one without the other. Yeah.
Well, we could continue to.
If something happened, we wouldn't bring it to town meeting. Without the map, so.
Yeah, I I don't. Our next meeting would be the twenty-sixth.
Yeah. Um.
Next meeting with a voting forum. Yeah. I won't be here twice.
Twenty-six, you're out, Jeff?
Yeah.
I gotta start keeping an eye. They always mark that note, so. Twenty-six, Jeff out. No, what do you, what do you think, continue to the?
Sure, we don't have to discuss it again unless something comes up.
All right, um, Bill, oh, we should open up the public comment, I see that Abby Barrett's online, if you want to check to see if Abby Barrett has a public comment for for the same.
Abby, can you? I, sorry, I don't have a comment, I was just, um, signing on late and I, I had a question about, um, the sub-districts, but. I don't want to derail this meeting at all, so I can, I can follow up with an email.
Uh, that, that's up to you, you're welcome to provide it now and we can, we can discuss.
I just didn't know what, um, I had seen some language about sub-districts and I was unclear as to like where that was within. The, um, plan, I had looked on the, uh, MAPC website and I, I just couldn't find the sub-district.
It's, can, can we show the map? Yeah, I'm showing the map, it's on the, it's also on the agenda website, I think I put it up there. Here, let me share, it's easier just to share. You mean, you know, we share this, Bill? Of course. Which, again, I'll remind you, it would be great if we had two screens. You should be able to see that, guys.
I can see it.
Okay, thank. So tonight, we're only talking about, uh, ED and F.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the. Bill's storage place in Wendy's.
Mm-hmm.
He is. He is that. The, uh, burned-up John Deere building. Going down to the Alps and then. E is Alps. Almost down to downtown.
Okay, and the sub-districts would be where?
Well, that's sub-districts.
These are three of them and then.
Oh, I got you, okay.
Yeah, you can see, A, we've already done, so B and C, we're gonna go into details later on, but those are the mostly residential districts, so those won't be changing as much.
Okay, great, thank you, I appreciate it.
Um, anything else, Abby?
No, that's it, thanks.
Sure. All right, uh, what, what's the date we're looking to continue? We can continue or we can, we can vote approve tonight. We're gonna continue. Okay, then, then. Um, that would be August twenty-sixth. All right, I'll make a motion to continue to August twenty-six at seven PM.
Second that.
On favor to continue, uh, what we, we should do is by roll call, so Bill Prenshaw.
Yes.
Natalie.
Yes.
I vote yes, uh, Jeff.
Yes.
And Chris Klein.
Yes.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Okay, let me ask one question real quick while I have this up. I, 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 um. This is the only question that. I have is about these two parcels, now, Bill did bring out a good point, bring up a good point. Can, can you zoom in? Any chance? Yeah, I, I can zoom in. Bottom right, there's a zoom function. There we go. Okay. These two. I brought up in my original presentation. Um. I think the, I have question, uh, and, uh. Bill has a, a, a different point of view on one aspect of these two parcels. Now, my only question is, and it's not really. I mean. And certainly for me, it's not a deal, it's just, it's a discussion point more than anything. And I don't know if I ever showed you this or not. This guy, since I did it, I might as well. Okay, these two parcels, here's John Beer. These are two individual houses here. Right? Did I show you this or not? I don't think I've seen this.
You sent it to me and Bill.
Okay. All right, here is where the zoning changes, right now. This is business zoning.
No, it's not.
This isn't?
No, that's not John Beer.
No, that, John Beer is here, ninety-six.
I went, that's rez and that's some booze.
Ninety-six is not. Is it some?
Two rez.
There's two residents, it's the public housing on the right, right?
Can you, can you share your screen? I'll see.
Oh, share, share your screen so Chris can see.
What's that?
Share your screen.
I thought I did.
Chris can't see.
Christopher, what are you doing?
What are you doing?
I'm not supposed to know I'm doing this stuff. Let's see, share. Can you see that, Chris?
Perfect.
All right, now let's try it again. All right, oh, maybe it's because I hit for the slideshow. That's it. Can you still see it, Chris?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anyway, here's the, um. Uh, looking across the, uh. Housing authorities here. I put this as single-family zoning, Bill, you think I'm wrong here, I could be. So. That one is what Bill's saying is business? It's not, not.
They're both.
Both, so they're going to zone. Oh, it's a typo, yeah, you're right, I see here, I put single family, yeah, it was a typo on my part, all right. Okay. All right, so yeah, because they did that right here, okay, so, yeah, ninety-four is business, this is, uh, you know, and. And then these are S-one. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, so here, I, I, I just had it, so this is all correct. Business here, single-family home, single-family home. Uh. So what are you, what are you trying to convey to us? I'm trying to convey to you that we have the, uh, senior housing here. And. Do we? Two questions, the, the, there's. Potentially single ownership of those three lots, John Deere, the two next to them. Okay, that's one, which would allow for cohesive development, and rather than sporadic stuff, if whatever was redeveloped. Secondly. I was wondering if, you know, if we did a, a, a mixed use. You know, could it provide amenity to residents at the?
Senior housing.
At senior housing in the general area, now, the question was raised by Bill. Which is true, the group, that. We. When you have an overlay district typically, okay? Like with an N B O D right now. The neighborhood business overlay district, you have an industrial underlying, which might not allow some uses that are made. Permissible by the application of the overlay district. So we would have to specify that. Bill has some other views that are, I understand he has some, uh, points about that too, so that, that was my only question to you guys. I guess the thing I would say is maybe think about it. So if we're gonna continue that anyway? Because we want to open it and just continue it because it wasn't. Sorry, think about what and still. Well, I mean, Bill, can you just explain your? My, 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 I can't, I'm not following, I'm having.
Bill wants to add those two parcels to D, to group them in with the non-residential more. Or open to more non-residential uses.
Okay.
Because it seems likely that those two parcels may be lumped in with the John Deere site.
Right, and, but right now, they're not part of D.
Correct, they're part of C.
Okay, and you guys were working on that, so.
Yes.
What was your thought?
No.
Bill does not want to change them to D. Why, Bill?
Couple points. One is sticking business next to low income housing and not sticking business next to every other single family housing is not a good look. You know, not a good thing to do. But also, because the underlying district is S one. If you don't also change that, then it doesn't matter. It's an overlay. You can't add anything anyways. Because the overlay only allows a brewery with ancillary food service in a private club. Those are the only other new uses you could put there. And yes, the overlay allows mixed use, but the commercial component of that mixed use has to be allowed by the underlying zoning, which is residential, which doesn't allow any commercial. So you couldn't put mixed use on there without re-zoning those parcels. So S one to me.
So the answer is that Bill does not want seniors to have a brewery. That's why.
Yeah. Uh oh. Yeah. So
so I mean, there's, you know, there's a policy decision and there's a practical.
And the the first thing about it, putting businesses next to the loan comp housing, that's an equity sort of consideration.
Right, I mean, yeah, I mean, if we want to go rezone so you can put businesses on Howard Road and everywhere else, sure, fine, then do it here too, but not only here.
Well, I don't know if that's there, it it's not like two doors down, there's not business use.
Right, but it's two doors down. It's two hundred feet away. So you don't have issues with, you know, twelve o'clock at night.
Deliveries and.
Cars and deliveries and noise and whatever.
That's true. That's true.
Four A M. deliveries and trash pickup and all sorts of stuff. Don't have that.
Well, I think the the question is, do you want what's in between to stay single family housing? Is that what's appropriate?
That's what is currently zoned.
I know.
I think it's a whole different discussion. You want to rezone that. It's not an overlay issue. If you want to rezone it, fine, then you can try to do other stuff, but just putting an overlay on top of that has no
There it is.
practical thing except allowing a brewery to be put next to it with a low.
Well, this is how we would get around that if you wanted to do that. That's how we did it in the M D O D.
Yeah, I think it's important to have intent, what focus on the intent here. The big picture, you know, may maybe it's it was always residential. And big picture, we do want density. Now, maybe there's a consideration for considering how to zone that to encourage density of just residential.
Well, I do think that that's our plan for C and B moving forward, right? To allow for.
And that's not really the C and B intense.
C and C and B is.
Intensity over this to get rid of the substandard lot sizes and stuff. So everything they do is not.
So we're not going to allow any increased density?
That's not the objective of the of the district plan for those.
I wonder if you wonder if there's a way to look at this as a transition area. So not zoned as D, which could then have impacts on on inequitable impacts to the to the loan comp housing, but maybe a transition areas in sort. As a more balanced.
Well, if we, it could be. Also, if we kept it the way it is now, the way uh Bill Crenshaw's proposes, and something did come along, you know, we would have an idea what was going there and then we could take it and get a rezoning and take a little time. But then we can find out and that way we can make sure it was appropriate, what was going to go there.
Right. And I I fully agree with the consideration of equity. We don't.
Okay, well, let's just leave it then and see what does this?
We don't. And that's just my opinion. I I agree. I don't I don't want to.
Well, that's how we advertise and everything, so.
Ultimately, I hope that somehow someday we rezon the entire business district along the river to take out some of the more noxious uses.
Yeah, and at that time, sure, but
until we get into that fight, which is a big fight because that's taking away some existing uses. Um, I don't think messing with those two parcels both my foot.
Hmm.
I mean, look, looking at a older.
Go away on the river, but we can't.
Go go ahead, Chris.
Looking at an older document, I'm seeing that the purpose of D, smaller scale mixed use development with first floor retail and residential and commercial uses above that encourage pedestrian activity in neighborhood businesses. To me, that feels like the transition that I agree with Chris is maybe a good use of that space. Um, I agree with Bill Crenshaw of for equity pers- purposes, we don't want to necessarily put you know, full scale business or commercial next to the the affordable housing. But some sort of a transition, I I feel that the the single family residences squeezed between those isn't maybe the best use of that space.
Well, maybe you should leave it be as now we can always change.
Uh, yeah, I I mean, I mean, if there's other thoughts on this. I'm I'm I like putting a putting a a flag on this, right, for future discussion and figuring it out.
I I I think inherent in this is like people's right to to maintain single family houses as neighbors. And I I know it's an equity issue, but I have a problem with that stance anywhere in town to a certain extent. I'm not saying that I want to put, you know, Wendy's in the middle of the maze, but I'm saying, you know, I do think that they're I don't know.
Well, I guess the question, you know, what I always look at with these sort of things. Putting a flag on is it makes sense. For an overall onset, though, would you want the same if 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 something was changed there, would you want? What's in the best interest of the town and the district to have the same thing reconstructed there as a buffer or a transition, maybe? You know, or is it to kind of make it uh more um in line with the goals, you know, with with something that.
I think we put more thought. I I want to put more thought to it.
Yeah.
And maybe more input.
Well, we're gonna, what I'd like you to do, if you could board, um, is continue uh the uh map amendment also to the.
Oh, sure.
And you can officially do it yet.
All right, um, I'll open up the continuance of the public hearing for the zoning map amendment, uh, we will overlay districts, some districts E and F.
Daniel?
Oh, well, Bill just asked me to.
What's that?
I'll make a motion to continue.
Don't you have to open it to continue?
I know, but it wasn't posted, so.
So how do we get it to that meeting?
I will. You'd explain it, explain that the that the posting.
We've said, we've done this before.
Yeah.
So th- this item, the posting was was an error, um, was was posted late. Uh, therefore, we cannot have the hearing continue, but we need to continue to a future date.
Yeah.
And I will accept the motion.
The motion to continue the
Map Amendment.
You go to map amendment for Powder Mill overly, overly district, some district C E and F to August twenty-sixth.
Yeah.
Now that's, yeah, it's a good, yeah. People are in the office.
I'll second that favor for the continuance. Uh, please raise your hand. Uh, Chris, do you vote yes on the continuance?
I vote yes on the continuance.
Five zero, just for the continuous bill. Um, Bill, what are your update?
Um no, thanks. I don't have anything uh for us at this point, other than we did have to um turn down our first project due to water.
Hmm.
Well, and they're gonna pursue, they're trying to pursue well.
Can you disclose what project it was or?
Uh, it was one twenty-four Main Street, I think, one twenty, one thirty. I didn't, I don't know that. What if I'm actually the address. Um you are.
This is a
Justin.
Justin.
Yeah, so he's looked in, he's looking into a um well, which he could work at that site. Well, so that may be our future for anything.
What was the place to say it?
Proposed. Uh, it was between, I think, twenty-four or twenty-six units.
Right, I hear that.
Um, and it was going to, uh, what we were going to propose there was going to be um using that um inclusionary for density. And um
Yeah.
So as of right now, um, yeah, the way these are done, um, the passive studies are presented D P W and a study is is done for each item. So that one um was unable to go with town water. They did a town server, but not water. So right now, we're gonna be working with him about a well, which I think is probably the only answer to our smaller scale.
Yeah.
New, anything new.
Who pays for it?
What's that?
Who pays for the well?
Oh, yeah.
Who pays for the well?
The applicant would have to. But it's the, it's not a given because there's um I believe there's different standards when you serve over twenty-five people from a single source. And maybe, yeah. Yeah, it was a D P W and then state is involved with it. So what I, the reason I'm telling you guys this is that um it's very likely we're gonna get like a a a site plan request for this at one point. And if there's not water, then we'll just say, you know, subject to D P W providing or or signing off that there's adequate water for the site.
But that's the applicant's prerogative.
That's right. They want. Well, the reason it may come up is because the funding, that that their question was, I'd hate to pay, you know, a hundred some thousand dollars for a well, then have the planning board say no. So and I said, I think this board would be perfectly willing to, you know, hear the project on Samaris.
Every project, the applicant, they're allowed to submit an application. So if that's how the path they want to go. Um, that's that's it. That's their determination.
Yeah.
So we've determined a daily use of water that's too much now. So does that now apply to like one forty-one Parker?
Yeah.
Since we're building one thousand square feet of new space there, we can't do that either.
The 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 uses that that are really um significantly more are than the residential uses. Some of them were accounted for already. Uh but uh some of them were not. One forty-one Parker. Um
It's all new.
There's capacity to, yeah, for that.
But that that building may have a a number calculated already for it.
But we're adding five thousand square feet to the building.
That's right. That's right. More.
But it's not residential use.
It's not residential.
Right, but it has a use.
It does.
It's determined X square feet of cubic feet of water use is too much. But we're saying, we know for certain that one forty-one Parker, five thousand square feet is below that number.
Hmm.
Apparently, this is not a cumulative thing because that means the next project can't happen.
Yeah, no, it's true.
Well, what happens to two four Powder Mill, which is already approved?
Yeah, two four Powder Mill is going to, there's will be uh.
But now they can't build because they don't have water?
I don't know. They have to present. I I I I don't want to say for sure, but.
In the sum of one summer plus one forty-one Parker, seems like it's all over the line, so we can't do either of them.
There's not much we can do, but that's why we're.
Too much. Jeff Justin said there was enough water for this couple of small projects.
Yeah, yeah, and some of them are, a lot of them are infill where there's already accountability for it. But what I suggested to anybody, uh, and I I mentioned this today at our uh quarter, in in uh internal meetings. Anybody coming in for a new project is best off to start there. The way, there's a way around it. And you know, in some cases where you can do a while. I mean, people do wells and I I've been checking around with some of my colleagues in other towns and stuff that that they do multi-family projects on well. But it's a whole different thing. For example, if uh P M O D A developed with what, you know, they're what we were doing right now, it's supposed to get water. Now, they scuttle by is that, yeah, there's 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 signs that there would be plenty of water there drilling, but I don't know that they've, anybody's actually done it, but that's on that. But the point is for, you know, part of our we have to ensure that there's adequate, you know, facilities or adequate uh uh infrastructure, service facilities, and if we can't, like we have another case, we say subject to, you know, D P W rule. And that way it does, you know, it's about the best we can do. It's a, it's a shame, it's very frustrating, and I think um I would be surprised if more joint comes in.
So are we getting a D P W letter for the two current projects?
Oh, I'm sorry, what?
Are we getting a D P W letter of approval for the two current projects?
No, no, we're not. We are um
Then I have to vote no.
Well, um, that's you can, you, I mean, we typically don't get the letter until after. Uh, because we just, you typically, what we do is say subject to D P W. That's one of our conditions of approval on everything for the last couple of years. We never say, we've decided there's water there. You say D P W and that they're separately, they coordinate with D P W to ensure there's water. So now, to we we, there's no reason we wouldn't approve a project without water. We just say, you know, subject to availability of water, because what if they do well tomorrow?
The point is, have one forty-one and one Summer Street already approved D P W?
Yeah.
Isn't there a special permit have a language about adequate utility?
They have and Mark, uh, the, uh, I'm sorry, Chris.
Yeah, go, no, you go.
Um, and I don't want to speak out of school because I'm not sure exactly what's happened. But I think um I'm not sure. I I I think, but 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 our, but one Summer Street and uh one forty-one Parker.
Yeah.
Have already been accounted for with that.
Which I'm not surprised by. I mean, one forty-one Parker was designed as an office building that was going to be at full capacity. I'm sure twenty years ago, it was at full capacity.
It's full now.
No, but I'm saying with people working in every office every day, it was accounting for hundreds of people who are going to be in the office. That is no longer the case. It's one hundred percent rented, but every room is not occupied. Every restroom isn't being flushed.
No, no.
Today.
It's a.
The fire station has previously been used for however many full-time firefighters to be in residence twenty-four hours a day.
Yeah, it's an existing structure.
So therefore, tri- switching to a residential use probably isn't as drastic as switching, you know? So I think I'm sure the D P W has accounted for this stuff.
Yeah, it would be a problem in the mill now with the mill. Um, you know, if the mill, now they're looking, I I I understand they're gonna look at wells and stuff, but but I don't know. But yeah, it's it's a, it's a search.
Hmm.
I think our rules and regs are part of that.
Yeah, let's let's look into this. Uh, uh, is it our site plan? Or is it our one, is it our special permit in in ten point four that says uh adequate utilities?
No.
We I think, I think it's, is it the special permit?
Special permits.
Yeah.
Requires, I know, i- i- it says that we have considered the uh
Right.
adequacy.
Right.
Right, so in this, it would be
Right, so.
It'd be self-defeating to say no. I mean, if we know that they're going to do a well or whatever, I mean, but we could.
Well, then then if the proposal is to do a well, then we can say there's adequate utilities. But if the proposal is to use town water and we're now notified that town water is getting fused.
We've never, it's not, it's not our purview to issue to say that there's water.
Right, so now I think we're at the point, though, where we just need something that's confirmed before. I, it's hard, anyway. I'm I I I'm not making any blanket statement, but I'm
Yeah.
I I have to look at this myself.
Yeah.
I have to take a look at this.
And our plan, what we did with our plan board rules of regs, um, which is where we, you know, we addressed this a couple of years ago, we put it something to the effect of um you're going to require a separate peer review for your capacity.
Yeah.
And we saw this coming back.
I just want to want you to know that there is a possibility that my review on this will end up being that if based on the special permit language, that we would, we might need a letter from D P W that says this can proceed.
Understood.
Before we can vote.
For which? The 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 other two?
No, just in general for a special permit now.
I would say.
But I I don't know yet. Let me, let me.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, I think that's, I think that makes sense.
That's all.
Yeah.
Because it's, it is how our special permit language is written, but I have to look at each.
Yeah, I've never, I've never, we've never said there's capacity. We've said in older ones, we've said that that we've, if we have a letter from D P W, we'll say D P W has indicated there's capacity.
Yeah.
Uh, and the last couple of years, uh, because D P W writes the conditions typical, you know, for that. They then so I just kind of go off of that, but uh.
All right, well, thanks for that.
Yeah.
Um, can we switch topics? Yeah. Um, we have we, planning board has a membership on the Economic Development Committee.
Yes.
And I wanted to, I've been serving as that representative, but I wanted to bring it to the board to see if there is any interest in someone else serving uh as a liaison to the E D C.
I'll trade you for. I'll trade you for C P C.
Man. I need help. Before, before we negotiate that, um. Does any, does anyone have any interest on in in participating in the E D C as a representative of the planning board?
It's once a month, and it it's at uh, three o'clock on a. I think it's three or three thirty on a. There is. I went and said typically. Um, the reason it's important. Um, is. It galvanizes a lot of the E D C initiatives, I think it's very important. To have a voice there, I talk about our stuff all the way, but if somebody wants to do it, most of it's online, way, and it's not a heavy lift, I mean. Chris will tell you. It 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 it's not, but it is important to have a voice there, uh, one of the big things that we're having problems with at E D C right now. Is um. We developed a marketing plan. And. Um. Asked the board for feedback on and and some participation, a couple of the short term initiatives, things like that, we haven't. We haven't gotten a lot of uh, of people, I mean, people split, they didn't get it. But in any event, it, yeah, E D C representative from the planning board would be, is good, it's not a heavy lift, it's it's fun if anything, but. It's nice to have so many from a planning board. If not, you know, I can make, I can cover for it, but I think that's somebody else in there.
I I wanted to just see if there's any answers. But anyone? No, think about it, just let me know. Um. Then if not, we'll figure it out.
I'm mildly interested in. I'm not interested. Uh, someone else should be, because it's very fun, and I did it for a couple of years.
Let's um, so let's think about that, maybe we'll talk about it.
That's all I got.
I'll make a motion to close the meeting.
Hold on a second. All in favor of a close, please raise your hand. Four zero here, and Chris is a yes as well. All right, thanks, Chris.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, well soon.
Thanks.
Yes.
Bye, Chris.
See ya.